So, uh, we will go ahead and start. Our meeting on Tuesday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Madam Clerk.
Councilman Jindal. Councilman Leonard.
Here.
Councilman Rigsby.
Here.
Mayor Per temporary Daly.
I'm here.
Oh, okay. And Mayor Duper.
My work order got put in.
Here.
Thank you, and Mayor Duper.
And, uh, here.
Thank you.
I'm gonna try to stay away from the mic, cuz it's real sensitive. Okay, um, a report on closed session tonight at six o'clock, the council, uh, met with city staff to go over some of our new, uh, fire department equipment, you know, with some demonstrations and explanations, and also to take a look at, um, our remodel that's going on at the fire station, so. That is all that I have to report on our closed session. Um, and ask, uh, council member Leonard to lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
All right, let's stand. For having the Father, we thank you once again for your love for us and the gift of life, pray your blessing upon this meeting, and we come to the right decisions that is best for our city or citizens in this beloved place we live in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, sir. Mister City Manager, do we have any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Thank you. Uh, right now, we have a, uh, section for comments from the public. Uh, anything that is not agendized, I have a couple of comment cards here, but one of them is for an agendized item. And then, uh, Dick, you wanted to speak about something that was not on the agenda, correct? Okay.
Okay, thank you. Dick Wiley. This is the... No, we're getting feedback from somewhere. This is the closest council meeting to nine eleven. It's a little past, but I would like to suggest a couple of things, that, um, that day to be remembered. Twenty years ago, I've seen a program that was talking about the children from nine eleven that were born before... They were born either before or after that. And they had no idea of what went on. They lost family members, mothers or fathers. And so I thought, this is something, here in Loma Linda, we've done it every year. And I understand probably reasons why it wasn't done. Because that service back east took five hours to go through. So that would have interfered with what was here. But in the meantime, to remember that carried on every year, you, you look at a little deeper than just the buildings and smoke. You had first responders. And when I'm saying first responders, I talk about the fire department, and I'm talking about nurses. Cuz this COVID thing is another issue. And they put a lot of time and effort that we may not see ramifications from that until years from now. The overload on their, their mind. You look at some of the soldiers that came back with the PTSD. We might have something similar with your nurses. This is when we need maybe every year to say, "Thank you." We've got our fire department. We just take 'em for granted. After they're, they'll come down, they'll put out the fire, they'll do whatever. But do people stop and say, "Thank you"? This is a time, maybe in the city, where we can say, "We would like to thank you if you're in the store." "Thank you, guys." I've heard comments, people say, "Oh, I drive by there," and they're just probably sitting there and watching TV. Or, you know, they're not doing anything till they get called. I said, "Have you been down there? Have you looked?" "Oh, no," but that's the, the appearance. And that's not the appearance. It's more than a workday. And this is why, as I say, we need to honor them for what they do. And maybe put something on the, the calendar every year at this time, to just bring something up, say, "Thank you, people." You know, they don't have to do it. I give you one surprising incident that I saw. That, this is about ten years ago, fifteen years ago, and we had a hundred and twenty-day degree here, degree day. I didn't believe it. So I got my car and I go down here to where the old bank was. There's the time and temperature. And I took a picture of it. It said a hundred and nineteen, hundred and eighteen. I still go down to the academy. We've got the time and the temperature there. That's at a hundred and eighteen. And just as I'm taking a picture, going northbound on Anderson, here comes the brush engine for a call. And I got them with the time and the temperature. Fortunately, it worked out. But I'm thinking, who in their right mind, you know, normal people, would complain, "I gotta go out in a hundred and eighteen-degree weather"? So this department and our nursing staff in this area needs to be respected and thanked for the hard work and effort they put in. They, they do it as a job, and most of it's in the oath that they take, but we take 'em for granted. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick. I think it's also, uh, important to, to mention at, at this point, um, the loss of, of one of our city staff members, uh, about a week or so ago. Um, and that was our emergency services coordinator, Shannon Kendall, with the fire department. Um, passed away unexpectedly, and so the city, and I know our fire department is, uh, is grieving and mourning, so. As a council, we send out our condolences and our thoughts and prayers to all of them, and especially to the families, so. Okay, with that, we'll move on to our scheduled items. Uh, we have the consent calendar. Oh, I'm sorry. Our mayor emeritus.
Mayor Emeritus. Thank you, um, Milford Harrison. I just, just a couple of things. First of all, I wanted to say that, um, as, as we begin to transition into, uh, food collection, uh, food waste collection, uh, we are hoping that, uh, more of you will be taking the advantage of the opportunity to go down and see our, and, uh, see R and R's anaerobic digestion facility in Paris. It's, it's quite a marvelous, uh, system that takes it in and turns it in. It one hundred percent recycles it. Turns it into, uh, methane gas, which actually runs the trucks, and, uh, and fertilizer, which you buy in, at Home Depot. It's a hundred percent recycling. And that's where the food waste from Loma Linda will go, uh, in the, in the near future. And as part of that, CalRecycle, the state organization that is the watchdog for everything we do about recycling and trash disposal and so forth, once a year does a, uh, a report and, and a total investigation of how we're handling that in this city. And that just, the report from that just came back, and they said the city of Loma Linda is golden. That was, that was their terminology, that, uh, everything we're doing is, is right, and, uh, they really praised the city for what's being accomplished here in regard to those requirements. So I just wanted to let you know about that. Thank you.
Milford, could I, since you're kind of the waste disposal expert in our city, I've been reading more and more about climate change and issues and so forth with, you know, all of the weather, uh, problems and fires and so forth. And I'm, I've read a lot about plastics, and how some types of plastic are readily recyclable and others are getting shipped to third-world countries who aren't accepting them anymore, and what's happening to the plastics? Because I, I have to acknowledge, in our house, we have a lot of plastic.
Right, so do we. And we try to do our best to recycle them.
But how do I know if it's getting recycled? If I throw it in the right can?
It's exactly what you said. Um, some of it is getting recycled. And they have categorized plastics more definitively now than they used to. And some of them are readily recycled, some of them are recycled at some foreign countries, um, Vietnam, et cetera, uh, take some of them. China accepts just one narrow, uh, type of, of plastics. And, um, and others, very honestly, are getting buried in landfills. And, uh, it's a, it's a very frustrating situation right now. It used to be that cities got kickbacks for the recycling. And now, we're having to pay. It's just completely flipped. So it's, uh, and, and of course, that goes back on the ratepayers.
Sure.
The citizens, so it's, it's unfortunate, but they're working hard on it. I don't know if, uh, any of you saw the piece that showed what they're doing in Singapore. In Singapore, they have built a facility that takes all of it, all trash, and burns it. And they literally reduce it to powder. And it's, uh, it, it's, it's a very, very complicated and I'm sure very expensive system, but it's kind of state-of-the-art now. So they're, uh, that's something that, that they're beginning to look into more and more.
Well, I, I don't want to get into an environmental debate, but burning doesn't necessarily resolve the environmental impact either.
Well, but the way, it, it's fully contained. Nothing escapes. So it's, I don't know how they do it.
Singapore's innovative.
I don't know how they do it. I would love to take a tour of the facility.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'll give, uh, another comment on the anaerobic digestion facility. That's, that's pretty impressive in its own right. And my understanding is, there's very few in North America, right? Or is only one or two? I can't remember, it's been a couple of years.
Ours, ours was the first one.
Okay.
CRNR's was the first one. There are, there are additional facilities being built of the same, similar type. East Valley Water District is building one right now at the corner of Del, uh, Del Rosa and Fifth Street. And however, it doesn't take both. It only takes food waste.
Yeah, you guys do green.
The unique thing about, about the one in Paris, uh, CRNR facility, is that it takes both green waste and food waste, and, uh, completely recycles it. So it's, uh, and there are not very many of those, but they are beginning to develop more, um, around the country. And this facility in Paris has been the example for that.
Thank you very much. We're always interested in finding the best ways to manage, so. Okay, any other comments from the public? Listening none, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Mister Mayor?
Yes.
I have a couple of corrections on the consent calendar. The agenda included the August treasures report, and that information was not available at the time the agenda went out, so it is not in the agenda packet. It will be on the next agenda. And a correction to the demands register, the last page of the demands register, the payroll date is incorrect. It indicates, um, nine twenty instead of nine zero two. Um, so I just need to make those couple of corrections. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any? Uh, we have a motion.
I'll move it.
In a second.
Consent calendar?
Yes.
And we have a motion?
In a second.
In a second, okay.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. And the motion is to approve the items on the city council consent calendar. Councilman Jindal.
Aye.
Councilman Leonard.
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby.
Yes.
Mayor Per temporary Daly.
Aye.
And Mayor Duper.
Yes.
It passes, thank you.
Thank you very much. We don't have anything in old business, but we have some items under new business. Mister City Manager, number thirteen?
Yes, sir. Number thirteen is this Wednesday, uh, next Wednesday, uh, the mayor, Conrad, and I will be in Sacramento. And the, there's two resolutions on the, uh, agenda. The first one is proposed by the city of Rancho Cucamonga, have to do with the one percent sale tax, the way the, um, I'm gonna use Amazon, uh, the way they, they do a sale tax on the fulfillment, uh, center. Currently, th- they, they want to have the, the, uh, the stores, the warehouses be a, a, um, point of sale. So, right now, like the city of Rialto, city of San Bernardino, and city of Redlands will gain sale tax because they have more warehouses, uh, at those locations. And the city of Rialto, I mean, Rancho Cucamonga would like to propose to keep current sale tax is to go to the people who purchase those items. So if you order the, uh, item from Amazon, the sale tax should come to Loma Linda. If people in, in Redlands purchase, then the sale tax should go to Redland instead of at the warehouses. So that what the item, resolution number one, so, and, and, uh...
Should be an interesting discussion.
Well, the way it works is...
There will definitely be winners and losers.
There's no winner.
Yes, yes, yes. And, and, and a lot of time is, when we, when it get on the agenda, they will vote for it, you know, so that's, that's pretty much the way it is. And, and, and item number two is for the, uh, the state to fund California Public Utility Commission to help pay for the inspection and cleanup of the homeless, graffiti and dumping around the, uh, the railroad right of way, and, uh, to improve the quality of life, and that's it. Those are the two items.
Enjoy your meeting.
I move that we, um, recommend to the delegates to vote their conscience.
Now, wait a minute. That's out of character. You usually want them to vote their pocketbook. Which would mean we want to keep the taxes.
That is a distinction without a difference.
But, but, if that, I would, I would support the city of Rancho Cucamonga proposal is because the tax come to us.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
And, and that is what proposed.
Okay.
And, and I heard that a man would like to leave early, so I ended up being up staying late.
Not me, I'm, I'm good. But we have some other folks that gotta get going, so.
No, no.
Oh, from the, from the, oh, from the, no, I'll be there for that on Friday. Yeah, yeah. Okay, so no clear direction on that? We'll just have to wing it and see how it goes? Or does anybody have a position they want us to take? Do we support the resolution?
Yes, support the resolution.
As many times as the Amazon delivery trucks are up and down my neighborhood streets, why not?
Yeah, not to alienate San Bernardino, Redlands, and Rialto, but it seems more equitable to... Gotta encourage, encourage your residents to purchase more. That's, that's all you gotta do.
The issue with that becomes that those communities are more affected, right? Like the ones surrounding the warehouses, so...
But, but they...
I'm not sure I understand your comment. Those communities are more affected.
Communities where warehouses are built, so take San Bernardino, uh, take Redlands, they're more affected, right? You have more traffic, you have more diesel trucks. Um, there's just more problems that come with warehousing, and I think the rationale is that they need more money to alleviate some of those concerns.
San Bernardino needs more money for sure.
Now, see, here, we're gonna get into a debate because in my mind, they invited those places, those types of businesses, rather, and those warehouses to come in, so.
Yeah, and they're, and they use our, they use our, our on-ramps and off-ramps for their warehouse.
That's, that's for sure.
Point taken, though, understood, understood.
So I will second, uh, Councilman Rigsby's motion.
Vote your conscience.
Vote the conscience.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't, I don't think we need to take a vote on that. I think we're good.
I think that's probably the null position.
The null position.
I think it is.
That means no advice whatsoever.
Yeah.
Cuz you're gonna receive more information when you're at the conference anyway.
Sounds good. Okay, um, let's move on to item number fourteen, which is actually two different items. So, uh, city staff, take your pick.
I'd like Conrad, two percent. Okay, here, the one on, uh, on the rave.
The two, real quick. First, um, I, I don't know what order they are on there, but the first one is the, regarding the, the raves in San Bernardino. We've had, uh, some complaints about that, and I, I get to experience that too, cuz it's, uh, from, from my house, I can watch it with a decent telescope. Should I wanna see like an EDM concert someday? Um, but, we, we did reach out to the promoters, um, had a great conversation with them. Uh, in the past, what they've done is they've done sound monitoring in Grand Terrace. They weren't really aware, according to them, that there was an issue with Loma Linda. So as they go forward, they will bring, um, sound engineers and sound monitors into Loma Linda. I offered them to use my, my driveway as their staging point. So, um, we'll, we'll have a staging point in Loma Linda where they have a, a baseline to monitor from. Um, the other thing is, is they're, they are putting up a hotline. They had it last time, and we'll make sure to get that out to the public and to you. Um, the hotline, if you guys wanna write it down, is four-two-four, and we'll email this and get it out to everybody as well. Uh, three-zero-three, six-zero-one-seven, four-two-four, three-zero-three, six-zero-one-seven. Um, it'll only be active the days of the concert, but if there is a noise issue, um, citizens can call that, then what they'll do is they send a sound engineer to that location, wherever the person says that they're having the problem, um, do a sound measurement, and they can remotely adjust, um, some of the, s- some of the volume as, as well as they can. And they, we actually spent a lot of time, it's pretty interesting, to discuss how they, they shape the sound on-site with the way the different speakers face each other, and they, they phase the different speakers, so they try and keep the sound kind of contained in that box. I, I, look, I hear it too. You're shaking your head like it ain't working. I, I hear it too. Um, and one of the other things they're, they're starting to employ, I guess they put fans around the, the site, they did this last time, to put some fans, and it breaks up the sound so it really can't get through the moving air as well. Um, personally, I found that it wasn't so much the sound, the noise, it was the bass, and that kind of thump-a-thump of vibration, so. Well, we, what we can say is, is that they are taking an active role in working to mitigate that, and working with us to mitigate it. Um, that is, is a very positive, you know, positive thing on their part, and we'll, we'll see how that goes. On the negative side, um, because of COVID, they canceled a bunch of concerts last year. They sold the tickets, so they have to make up for them this year. They're not giving the money back, so they're staging these concerts. Um, and I think one of the reasons that it was such a big issue last, you know, this last time, is that there was a concert one week, a week break, and then a concert. Where, you know, if it's once every couple of months, eh, it's, it's annoying evening, but not a, a repeat performance over and over again. Um, unfortunately, to finish out the year, there's going to be a series of concerts. There's one for November nineteenth and twentieth, one for, uh, September twenty-seventh, or sorry, did I miss the October one?
Yeah, there's October forty-first.
I swear there's one in Oc- oh, there it is, October twenty-ninth and thirtieth, November nineteenth and twentieth, November twenty-seventh, which is a week away, December tenth, two weeks away, and New Year's Eve. So that November and December, that essentially, there's gonna be, you know, a, a concert every other week. And, and we will, we will get the noise complaints for that. But we will, we are working with the promoter. Like I said, he's, he's literally setting up shop in my driveway to, to do the monitoring, and then we'll, we'll work with them to try and mitigate that as we go forward. Um, for twenty twenty-two, there are only five scheduled for the whole year. So we should get back onto a regular routine then, um, where although it is inconvenient at times, it's not week after week of inconvenience.
Do we know what their threshold is for...
Fifty-five, the, the city code is fifty-five decibels at the property line. So were you to hold a concert in your backyard, we would, we would limit you to that. So it would be fifty-five decibels at the, the city limit would be probably the way you look at it.
Is that a soft whisper?
Um, no, it's, it's, I don't wanna say a good yell, but it's, it's louder than what we're doing now. I mean, louder than, than this right here. But it's, so, um, it, it's loud enough that even at fifty-five decibels, you know, if you have your windows closed, you may, and you're a light sleeper, you may still hear it. And, and like I said, at least personally, what I found, it wasn't the sound, it was the bass.
So who, who set that threshold? Is it the company or...
That's our, our municipal code.
That's our code?
Yeah. So were, were you to have a party, your own concert in your backyard, you would be limited to that.
And are they doing anything preventively? In other words, are they testing the system before the concert, so from your backyard, so they know that they're gonna be within the appropriate limit?
Yeah, they, they do sound checks the day before to tune that, to try and tune it in. And they're also working with Grand Terrace.
They didn't do any sound checks in Loma Linda.
Well, and, and their answer was that, uh, they weren't aware Loma Linda was a problem. They did do it with, with Grand Terrace. Um, we are, we certainly made sure they knew we were a problem going forward, which is why they've, they've made that effort to have the, the location.
We've had these discussions with them before.
I, I am relaying their information.
It's, um...
This is the most they've ever done.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean bef- while bef- yes and no.
I don't know that we've had a discussion with the promoter before.
Well, we were notified that there was a hotline number last time.
It came from the sheriff's department and...
We actually, actually remember, years ago, we had a meeting with San Diego Police Department, came in and represented at a council meeting. So, yeah, so we've, we, we have addressed this before, but it might be different promoters, or it might be different venue managers.
I don't know that we've addressed the promoter. We've addressed the city of San Bernardino, the mayor's office, and, and the police department in the past, but we're, we're at the, we're at the source, and at least, uh, at this point, they sound like they're willing to work with us, and, um, we, we can't promise that there won't be any, because there, there will be.
Yeah.
But at least to, to mitigate it as much as possible, with the understanding that, you know, November and December's gonna be a busy time for that.
It's, it's un- it's unfortunate they're not here to answer the questions, and so we don't wanna badger you, cuz you're on our side. Um, but, you know, I, I'm looking at some of the emails that I received, and plenty of people said they called the hotline with either no answer or no callback. So I'm a little challenged with the hotline piece because it doesn't sound like they maybe have enough people staffing, or, 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 or whatever.
Actually, I'd...
Right, no, and this is...
Beyond that, personally, I called the hotline on the, I think it was the first time, and it was about twelve-thirty, one o'clock in the morning. And really, I mean, I, I had the hotline from the, the sheriff's lieutenant made the call. They did answer, they were very polite. Um, said they, you know, took my address, said they would look into it, and ten, fifteen minutes later, there was a noticeable difference in the amount of base that was coming through. And that's, that's anecdotal, that's me. I don't know if, you know, a hundred other people called and that got, didn't get through. But I, I did find them personally to be responsive when I did call.
And it, it is the base that is the...
For me.
So, a, a couple of things in the emails that I got, real quick. Most people said they were not trying to cancel it. They understood the economic benefit to the city of San Bernardino and surrounding communities. Um, one lady said, "You know, I went and saw U2 at the Rose Bowl several years back, and I just can't imagine there isn't a way to control this better if you can hold a concert in the Rose Bowl surrounded by all those very expensive homes in Pasadena and not have an issue." And so again, I know we're, we're speaking into the wind. This is not a you, um, Conrad, but, um, there is obviously a level of frustration. I think most of us have got phone calls and talked to people. I'm just trying to put it on the record. I know there's people watching on, on the live tonight that, that were affected by this, and so, uh, we appreciate the work you've done. I try to share that, hey, our, our assistant city manager is one of the most impacted by this because of the way your house faces, and you really get a brunt of it, so I know you know, so that, that was my comment.
Conversely, the first time I've ever called Loma Linda City Manager at midnight, I don't think I woke him up, but anyway, I wanted to share what I was hearing, and he hadn't heard it. It's because you sleep with your air conditioner on, I guess, but, um...
Yeah, and I think it is, it, to, to both of your point, I think it's, it's positional. So it depends really where your house is, the direction it is, what canyon the sound's coming up, and, and how it reflects. So it's very possible that you may hear it very clearly, and your neighbor doesn't hear a thing, just because of the way your house is built.
My neighbors heard it too.
So, um, but, you know, the city manager may, may sleep a little more soundly than I do, too.
Thanks for following up on that.
Thank you. We do have a, a second, a second noise issue is a follow-up from, uh... Thank you. We do have a, a second, a second noise issue is a follow-up from, uh, the, the cemetery discussion last time. Um, we did, and, and I, we have representatives from Dignity Health here that can, can speak to this once. I've kind of laid some groundwork if you'd like to, to hear from them. But, um, I, I do want to say that they have been very responsive. They've, they've worked with us on trying to begin to get things in place and, and granted, it's only been a month, so there's, there's some lead time in getting things into place. Uh, I believe they passed out a letter to you that they plan on getting out to the homeowners. And I did speak with them about some of the things they've laid out. They've reached out to Colton PD, they've reached out to us. And although there's, you know, there's a history of changing behavior out there because the, you know, from what I can see, this has probably gone on for a while and people are used to doing it. It's going to take time to change that behavior. In, in their, in respect for them, they have been very responsive and working with us to, to help mitigate this as much as we can. And I think, um,
let me, uh-
We can get representative from Dignity, Dignity to actually explain what, what it is they're doing, if that's all right.
Well, let me, since I brought it to the agenda, let me, let me speak to the correspondence I've had and put out some of the things that I personally witnessed and then that way they can answer directly and I don't have to, we don't have to go around about. Uh, so after the last council meeting, uh, several of those residents that spoke started emailing me and sending me examples and shared video and audio files with me, and I know they've done the same with other council members here. Um, I was actually shocked. I, obviously, we had a lot of people showed up at our meeting and, um, they were very convincing. Um, but I still had some doubts, um, as to really the, the seriousness of it. And then I started seeing the pictures and the videos and whatnot. And so, um, the, the comments and the concerns with, I mean, I got a myriad of emails here with especially a few folks, um, is that they did have interaction with, um, the cemetery to varying degrees of success. Um, there was an incident, uh, this last Friday, uh, where, um, one of the homeowners went out and started to record some of this activity going on and he was physically threatened by the people. Um, the Montecito security guard showed up. She sat in her car for quite a while. Eventually she got out and approached the group. They threatened her, at which point she started recording, uh, video of them also. So that, that was an incident last, last week. Uh, last night, my wife and I had to go out for an errand and, uh, we just decided to drive by at about six o'clock last night. So we drove up Oakwood and as soon as I got up to the top of Oakwood by the barricades that we put in up there, um, I, I was actually surprised because I could see a, a couple of parties that were going on inside the cemetery. So I actually took pictures. I knew you were shaking your heads over there, but I had pictures, so. And, you know, um, so, so from that point, uh, we decided to actually drive into the cemetery. So we drove back down Oakwood to Barton, down to the entrance. We drove in and we drove over to that east wing, which is, which is the area that I think most of our homeowners are complaining about. And I was, I was really amazed at what I saw. There were at least four large parties going on and I'm talking large groups of family gatherings or, or whatever. Uh, uh, approximately fifteen or twenty people surrounding the graveside. There were tents, uh, not tents, umbrellas up for shade. Um, I saw, I didn't see barbecues, although I've heard about that, but I saw large ice chests, um, out. There were kids running around and playing tag, um, just running around. In fact, when I looked to the, to the north, which is where the, the property wall and, uh, foliage is set up there to kind of protect those people, I saw kids running in and out of those trees back there against the walls. I mean, from, from driving through the neighborhood off of Oakwood, I could hear the kids yelling and screaming. Now, I did not hear the mariachi music, which apparently has been going on quite a bit, uh, from the videos and complaints that we saw, but, um, but I could hear the kids yelling and screaming and running around on the cemetery grounds. Just, I've never seen anything like that before. Now, there, there, maybe I'm, maybe I'm not thinking in the way that other people think or, or understand. It could be a cultural thing. You know, we, we spent a lot of time talking about how peaceful cemeteries are and quiet and reflective at the last meeting and that's not at all what I saw. And again, so when I drove on, drove in there, there was four large separate parties going on at one time. So that was my personal experience, plus I have the pictures to prove it. Uh, plus we have, of course, all the information that our residents have sent us. So that's where we're at. Um, we're looking to mitigate that. Um, and that's separate and aside from the decision we made last week. Uh, but when we have this many people bringing up an issue, it obviously has to be addressed. So that's my perspective and I'll be quiet.
So we, we do have representatives from Dignity who can explain what, what they're doing and, and speak to the point. Thank you.
So one thing as they walk up, are you able to share some of that? Because we did receive emails, but I did see some of the ones that you're mentioning.
Yeah, um, one of the, one of the homeowners has a Google Drive that he shared where we can actually download the videos and watch them and, because some of them are too big to share via email. And so I'll reconnect with him to make sure you have access.
Hi, good evening. Um, my name is Jessica Sandoval and I'm the general manager of Montecito Memorial Park and Mortuary and Our Lady Queen of Peace Cemetery. First, I just want to clarify a couple of things. Parent company is Dignity Memorial, not Dignity Health. And it's Service Corporation International. So I just want to clarify because I think, uh, there's a lot of misconceptions that were part of Dignity Health. Mayor, to your point, uh, the incident you are referring to happened two Fridays ago. And the reason I know that is because I was actually onsite at the cemeteries. Fridays tend to be a day where I stay late at the park. Um, we also had a very large service for Dr. Hong, a very well-renowned doctor here from the local, uh, city of Loma Linda. So I actually, yes. Of course, thank you. Um, I actually went out and spoke to that family directly when security called me directly and said, Jessica, we have a family that has a band out here. They brought them after hours. They're refusing to leave. And I went out and I, I found the neighbor's, um, recording. Um, I, I've actually come across that quite a lot during our funeral services and a lot of our staff has been mentioning that neighbors are standing on their balconies, recording our services. And certainly, I can respect the fact that they're trying to, I guess, document the things that are happening. But one thing I do ask that families who are having services during the day, they could find that a bit intrusive to their, to their grief and what they're doing. With that said, I want to make sure that I point out that we've, this is a large machine and it takes a lot of parts to start moving and changing the perception or the idea of what's going on in the cemetery. I want to point out that from two thousand nineteen, we went from six hundred burials to now to twelve hundred, just so far in two thousand twenty-one. Okay? With that said, the area where the majority of the concerns are coming from has been an area with the most recent burials, the most recent burials in the last two years. One of the things that I am very conscious of as a general manager is the noise and the level noise and how it impacts not only the neighbors, but the visitors coming into Montecito. Meaning if I am a regular family that wants to come in and spend some time visiting my loved one, I too do not want to be, um, intruded upon by having loud noises such as bands or, or, or loud music. I do find that many of our families in this area are also working families and many of them have not had the privilege or the requirement to work from home. So then, many of them are working class families coming at the dinnertime to spend time with their loved ones. I go out and I speak to families on a weekly basis. Many of them in this area have had multiple deaths. And I mean grandma, grandpa, son, brother in the area. A lot of them feel like they have to come and pay that tribute at dinnertime. So, where are we now? We have taken the steps to do a few things at Montecito. First, you'll find in front of you in your packet, a draft of a letter that our intention is to send out to the three hundred residents that surround, um, Montecito, specifically on the Loma Linda side. If you will note, it does give a brief description of what's been happening in the park and of course, an apology to them that, um, we either have come off as, as not being as diligent in addressing their concerns. So our plan is to first set up an open public meeting to these residents to invite them in and also present in detail what I am presenting to you. Okay? It also lists the telephone number to our onsite security personnel. We have security, um, twenty-four hours a day. We have them in three shifts. First shift is eight to four, four to ten, and then ten till the next, to the following morning. Every morning, I get a report on the previous day's shifts of any concerns, of any challenges that may have been coming across the park. I do my very best and security knows as well that if they have a picture of the family or the location that was affected, I always give a personal phone call to that family to clarify and to tell them why they were, um, not necessarily cited, but why were they noted? Or, um, or what they were doing that was against our park rules and regulations. The second page just gives a brief update to what we're currently updating on our park rules and regulations. Our park rules and regulations are given out to every family that purchases property at Montecito Memorial Park and Our Lady Queen of Peace. So if you'll notice, it gives a little bit more detail on what could be, um, identified as amplified or prohibited music in and around the cemetery grounds. For example, loudspeakers, amplifiers, microphone, wind instruments specifically as trombone, horns, trumpets, saxophones, tubas and bagpipes, drums, electric guitars, electric keyboards, DJ equipment. Now, in the last meeting, one of the things that we talked about was, hey, there's no music outside of the services, right? There's, there really shouldn't be. This is only during the services. We will be, we have actually extended this to even current services. That means that it's every family, not just families that come on the weekends. It's every family that has a funeral service. So every family is being, um, provided this information now that they're making services at Montecito and Our Lady Queen of Peace. We've also reduced our graveside, committal and memorial services to be no more than forty-five minutes total to tr- to try to keep in within a reasonable amount of time for them to have services out on the graveside. And when I say graveside, outside in the cemetery grounds. So that's one example. The next, you'll see two photographs of the current signage that, an example of the signage. Uh, we have two main entrances into our park. One by the Our Lady Queen of Peace side and then one on the Montecito side. The first sign that you see is actually on the water bin entrance. That is the one closest to the area that the, that the mayor mentioned earlier. As you can see, it's quite clear, no barbecuing, picnicking, loud music, alcohol, tents, pets. I realize that signage is-
Is that a new sign or is that just recent? I, I'm sorry, or has that been there for a while?
Sure. This sign, um, was recently out in one area and that was in what we considered our, our primary entrance, which is on Washington. This one was recently added prior to the previous city council. So it, yes, it is relatively new. We've, uh, one picture I did not, um, also include was an additional signage placed right along that fence that borders Oakwood Drive. The next photo is a photo of the sign placed, uh, specifically in front of the Our Lady Queen of Peace Cemetery. Um, we worked really hard with the Archdiocese of San Bernardino because as you know, that's a whole separate, um, uh, entity that we have to consult with to make sure that the par- the park rules and regulations of both cemeteries match with one another. As you can imagine, from a family's perspective, it would not look right if they said you can allow this on the Catholic side, but not on the Montecito side. Um, the next photograph is of a mobile security tower that we installed in the cul-de-sac inside of, uh, our park. In the next page, you'll notice that there's a screenshot of the live feed that comes to both our security guard. So our security guard carries around a tablet with this live feed. Um, and then I get a live feed on my phone. Okay? So, can I hear sound through this? No. But I can identify large crowds. And this also allows us to monitor any trespassers coming in through the Oakwood Drive entrance after hours, meaning from closing time, which is sunset, to opening, which is sunrise. Because our park hours are sunset, I'm sorry, sunrise to sunset. And I am very grateful to report that every day as we get closer into the, um, into the colder months, we're losing about every one minute of, of sunlight. The next, uh, attachment is an email from the, from Lieutenant Ray Mendez. He and the captain of the Colton Police Department came out to visit, said, hey, what's your plan? What can we do to help? They have committed to providing extra patrol at the park. Um, they've committed at least for the next two months to provide two patrols at minimum to a day to assist in monitoring, making sure that there's more of an authoritative presence at the park. In addition to that, um, we have added, uh, and we will, it'll be starting this, this Saturday. We're adding additional shifts to the day, um, security guards on the weekends because some of the feedback, um, specifically from one of the residents was this, these items can get, um, are happening more and more often on the, on the weekends. So the security personnel has also been directed to make sure that they are, um, identifying when, you, you can tell when a band is coming in. It's a large van. There's usually a sign right along it. Um, we're also working with drafting notifications to our neighboring mortuaries, letting them know of the changes that are happening at Montecito. Because we also need help from our local mortuaries in stopping it right at, uh, the arrangement time so that we're all set up for success on that end. These are just some of the examples of where we started. It's, it's not a perfect plan right now, but I'm confident that we're starting to shift, um, the perception and the idea. Please understand that on, on my end, I'm here to serve families. I'm here to serve the neighbors and I'm here to serve the community. So I get the mayor's, um, response about the kids running around. I get that. But please understand that for many of our families, that's the way they connect as family members together, especially large families. Now, I certainly, you know, I come from a big Hispanic family, I, we know. Um, actually, I will say I don't. My husband does. Um, so I know that a crowd of four is very different from a crowd of fifteen. We focus on any crowds over four or five people that are being intrusive. We focus a lot on making sure that people are not having alcohol. These are hot months. People are going to bring coolers, have water. They may eat at the cemetery. But we highly discourage parties. So I know that sometimes there, there, there could be a, a difference of opinion on what is considered a party, what's considered a gathering and what's considered a visit. Sorry. Anything else? I'm sure you have questions for me, but I just wanted to present with the things that we're taking in place or we're putting in place to try to move in the right direction. I don't take what the, what our local neighbors are ta- are saying lightly. Um, it's been very much on my mind. I have connected with one neighbor, um, specifically Deborah Vendetti. She has my personal cell. We text. Um, she was the person that reached out to me the day after that, that, that big incident and we talked. Lovely woman. We talked on the phone for a while. Um, she reached out to me one time right after. She reached out to me one time right after, that was on Labor Day, to let me know about a family that had brought in a band. We addressed it right then and there and took care of it. And that's what I do, that's what our park does. That's where we're at right now.
I've got a comment. I think Javin had, go ahead.
I was just going to say, last time we discussed this, we know this isn't going to be a quick solution. We're not going to solve it in the next month or two. But I do appreciate the steps that you're taking and hopefully, we can all come together and find that ground where the residents and your organization can meet.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I would concur. I appreciate very much the initiative that you've taken, the clarity of the presentation that you made tonight to address issues that I think are very valid. You know, I personally, I mean, one of the votes that we took, what, two, three weeks ago, was whether to permit the sale of the additional property. I was and continue to be supportive of that and I'll feel even more strongly about that if the measures that you're implementing are successful. And I think the mayor mentioned that there may be some cultural variations in here and that may or may not be true. But several of the Loma Linda residents that are on the hillside there, one of the things that made their property attractive to them is they thought, well, this is a cemetery. It's going to be peaceful, it'll be well-maintained and green, this will be idyllic. And obviously, you heard stories and I've heard even more than you have. Well, maybe not, but I've heard enough. And the other issue that I don't think we really clarified last week, but some of these people work at home, particularly with pandemic and so forth. But there's one person I know on a professional level who's an oral radiologist and she does consultations, oral radiology consultations, not only around the country, but in different parts of the world. Because you can do all of that electronically. And she's been embarrassed that she's talking with somebody at a distant location trying to help them understand and diagnose this radiograph and they stop her and, you know, they're asking about the mariachi music that they can hear in the background. Now, I've been back in touch with her, asked if that's still a problem. And that's probably about two weeks ago I called her. And she said, well, we've still had some mariachi, but there's no drums and doesn't appear to be amplifiers now. So she thought that was a victory in and of itself. That was helpful. So I think even your initial steps are at least having some impact. So, I appreciate your willingness to work with us because you can understand how this could be troublesome to neighboring people. And if this all works, I would be willing to encourage the property seller to come back and give it another shot. Because, you know, there's lots of reasons why I feel that way and we don't have to get into those tonight. But I appreciate the initiative you've taken. I wish you the best of luck and keep us posted.
Thank you. Thank you. I will say, pandemic has hit everyone hard. What happened is, if you'll remember, everything was closed. Cemeteries were not. Services went from inside to outside and everybody started staying home. So, that is something that we're starting to shift away with. We're tracking visitors, we're seeing how much people are visiting. They are visiting less and less. It's not, again, it's not perfect. I know that there's definitely, we have a road ahead. But I do believe that we're on the right path. And I am committed to making sure that the neighbors know who I am, know who the team is that's here serving this community. Because I hear it every day. I hear people tell me, this is just a paycheck to you. You know, you're just, and it's not. Those of us who have been working through this pandemic have also loved, lost family members, have kept away from our families as well. We know, we know how important it is on both ends. And believe me, we are committed to providing a peace of mind for our neighbors and for the families that visit Montecito. But we're changing and certainly, I had initially selected September 30th as that day for the meeting. I ended up taking it off because I thought perhaps it's too short of a notice.
When do you anticipate sending this letter?
Well, I was anticipating sending it right after this meeting, but I realized that perhaps September 30th was too short of a notice. So after this meeting, if anyone has a suggestion, if what the city uses as a leeway time to let people know.
I think that's two weeks. I think that's plenty of time from my perspective.
Okay.
And I think a quick response to them is better than a delayed response.
Yes. Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. I brought business cards too. I can leave them. If you have anyone that complains about the cemetery, you're welcome to give that out. My husband's used to people calling me all the time, but I got to say, the neighbors are very respectful when they call me. So, we have some good conversations.
Thank you very much. Dr. Riggsby, did you have any questions?
No, I just handed them some type of graphical corrections.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll look forward to seeing a progress report. Okay. Any other items? Any reports of council members?
I have a question. So I think all of us got an email regarding a local business owner providing water without the customer asking for it. Are we enforcing that? No? Are we supposed to be enforcing it?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else from the council? Any reports of officers? You have one item.
Two items. Like I promised last year, that we now have replaced all our water meters to 4G. And now the homeowner can monitor their water consumption. I did it for myself. Lock on, I will give you information. I will mail this out with the next water bill to lock on to the website. It's come on to your water consumption by per day, per month, per hour. So you can see your water consumption and compare your water uses to your neighbor. See how you're doing.
Is that a good idea?
Well, this way you compare. And you can say that for 30% you notice by cellphone or by email. You have water leak at your house.
Does that show I can tap into your neighbor's water?
You can tell for the water jump up, the usage jump up.
Hey, sometime back, it was mentioned, months and months ago, that on the website, it was going to be changed. The payment portal was going to change. It hasn't changed that I've seen recently. Okay. When is that going to be?
I don't know. We need to do it later on this year. It's not early this year.
Could I ask you a question, you know, since we're talking about water usage? I'm willing to bring addresses to you where people are just shutting their water off. Yeah, and there's a number of places, because I take my dog for walks every night and man, it's looking really bad in some places. I mean, it's brown with tall weeds and so forth.
We can take care of the tall weed, but is brown grass?
We can give a notice for weeds and overgrowth and maintaining it. We cannot force them to water it.
That's something we would have to pass city ordinance for, right?
We would have to have an ordinance and it would be, how do you measure, the challenge is how do you measure that? Because I can go out and write somebody a ticket for not watering their lawn. They say, well, I grow brown grass or I did water it last week or whatever. If weed height, I can put a ruler on it and say it's 12 inches, cut it down to four.
But I can distinguish between brown and green or even half of each.
Can you in a court? And that's seriously from a practical-
I'll give it a shot. We've got a good attorney here.
From a practical standpoint, I have to make this citation stick. And you're going to tell me, yeah, there's green, there's a green blade in there, it's green. And I'm going to tell you it's brown and then we're haggling over the blade of grass.
Well, I'm talking about the extremes and we've got some extremes right now. And our, because we've had this conversation before and I know that there are some real challenges in working with some of these citizens that just decide to let everything go.
When it's a rental property, it's very difficult.
When it's what?
Rental.
Can't you hold the owner responsible?
We do hold the owner responsible. What we can do, and we did this in the spring, we can do it again, is basically I drove every street in the city and looked for the overgrown and the stuff that needs trimming. And usually what happens is you don't, you cut off the water and you stop mowing at the same time. And so we see this stuff with weeds-
Yeah, there's some of that. There's some-
The overgrowth and so we can at least go after the, you know, the tall dead grass and make a start at that.
So we prohibit tumbleweeds, but anything short of that, we, no, I'm being a smart aleck. I've got a few addresses I'll bring in and let's see if we can-
Let me, sorry. I was just going to say, just wait till they can see it on their phone in real time. You're going to see more brown because they're going to look at it and say, oh my goodness, shut it off.
At University in Barton. Okay? As you're going west and as it makes the curve around on the north side, is that a city easement or is that private property there? So, yes, there's a bunch of weeds there and the complaint was there's a bunch of homeless living now in that little gully. In fact, that was my errand I had to go out and do last night. That's why I was over there. So the question was, is that, I know we usually catch that with our weed abatement, but I think we're right in the middle of that, right? We should have another one coming up closer to the, or later on in the fall.
We're kind of in the weed abatement cycle and like I said, usually in the spring, I drive around, drive every street and look for the weed notices, but we don't normally do it in the fall, but maybe we can, I'll run by there and take a look at it.
Yeah, we had a complaint from resident that it was, it looked like a fire hazard and that there were homeless living in there, so.
I'll take a look at that. I think I have somebody over here that's interested in having the homeless looked at.
Yeah, okay.
I think that, I can't remember the name of it, the little park that's across from the basketball streets, courts down by Bryn Mawr. What's the name of it?
Oh, Veterans?
Yeah, down there where you come around off of Barton, you curve all the way around by the basketball. Yeah, there's a little park there.
Veterans Park. Veterans Park.
Yeah. That looked like it could use a little help. Yeah, I don't know if that's on your radar, but it looks like it needs a little cleanup.
Okay, one next report, the last one is our senior center. It's now a clothing testing center. You can pick from Monday through Friday, nine to five. It's run by the county.
Is it free?
It's free, but it may rent. They get the federal stimulus money, so I'm charging.
How long does it take to get results?
Our staff did it and it's like one day. Even though they tell you two to three days.
Random question. What happened with our sign on?
Mountain View.
Mountain View.
So we ran it all weekend. We just ordered one on the western part of town. It's made right now.
Was that related to the fatality? There was a fatal-
The green one or the blue one or the black truck?
That was not related to the fatality? Okay.
When is it going to be replaced?
I will come back to you to give me a price to purchase this.
For a low price of $150,000.
And there's no way to find out who did it, right?
I can't remember if we recorded. I think it did.
We're still waiting to the sheriff's report and then we will go back to the insurance of the driver.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. We'll close the city council agenda and open up the housing authority agenda. And the items to be added or deleted? And we have the consent calendar. We have a first and a second. Madam Clerk?
And the motion is to approve the items on the housing authority consent calendar. Councilman Gendal?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard?
Aye.
Councilman Riggsby?
Yes.
Mayor Per Tempre Daily?
Aye.
And Mayor Duper?
Yes.
It passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll close that agenda and open up the successor agency. Any items to be added or deleted? Okay, and we'll go down to the consent calendar once more. We have a motion. I'll move the consent calendar. And a second. Madam Clerk?
And the motion is to approve the items on the successor agency consent calendar. Councilman Gendal?
Aye.
Councilman Leonard?
Aye.
Councilman Riggsby?
Yes.
Mayor Per Tempre Daily?
Aye.
And Mayor Duper?
Yes.
And it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That closes the evening.